All right, it's five o'clock. So, let's bring the meeting for the 24th of July to order. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We'll do roll call first. Steve Ball, Phoebe Benziger. Chad Huffman is absent today. Delphine Jado.
Here.
Richard Rogers. Ronald Cairns.
Here.
And I'm David Fisher, and I'm here. Approval of the minutes from the 26th of June. You guys all get a chance to read everything? Awesome, any issues?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Delphine, do you have a second?
I second.
Thanks, Phoebe. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Staff, additions or deletions from today's agenda?
Just one minor thing. I don't believe Greg has introduced himself to the planning commission yet, so if you might notice, we have a new member on the staff level of the DIA, so please feel free to introduce yourself.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Greg Stunder, and I'm a staff attorney in the city attorney's office.
Awesome, well, thanks for joining us. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, well, in that case, we've got three agenda items today. A conditional use permit and two initial zonings. So with that, staff, take it away.
Sure thing. I'll start with the conditional use permit for the childcare facility, and just give me a minute while I pull up my presentation. There we go. So, yeah, good evening, planning commissioners. The item I have in front of you here is a conditional use permit request for a proposed childcare facility to be located at 703 South Ninth Street. As shown on the map here on the screen, the site is Zoned P in the green shade, which refers to public districts. The city is seeking to open a childcare facility in around mid-2025, and while government buildings and facilities aren't allowed use in the P-zone district, childcare facilities are actually a conditional use. So this is an aerial photo of the site in question here. As shown, the site contains a 4,200-square-foot building with ample yard area and parking. The site's actually used, it was actually used formerly as a daycare facility and is currently utilized by the Montrose County School District as an educational building. This is a property that is owned by the city, so I'll just mention that, and I'll mention that a couple of times throughout this. But the staff report lays out the background in pretty significant detail as to kind of how we got to where we are today. But just to summarize that, I'll provide some overview here. City administration and city council recognized the childcare shortage we have in the area, and after looking at the childcare needs assessment that was done about two years ago, as well as conducting a survey among city staff and some other partner agencies, it was determined that a solution was really needed, and if we could find a solution ourselves here at the city, that would be fantastic. So the first step of that was to actually identify a site that could work to open up a facility. And after a detailed search, it was determined that this site here was actually probably the best suited for it. It's a site, again, that is owned by the city already. It has ample outdoor space, which is required for licensing standards for childcare facilities, and it has a sizable amount of parking that exists, and it's close to the Civic Campus, you know, a few blocks away. It's tough to find a downtown property with kind of recreational space like this, and this site was identified and kind of seemed to be a really fantastic fit, so. After that, after the search happened, the city applied for an employer-based childcare grant through the state of Colorado in the amount of just over $600,000. And this grant funding was, it would be used to cover the cost of renovations as well as furnishing for the building. So the building, we did a number of site inspections before that grant request that we submitted, and determined it was in fairly good shape, but there was a number of remodels or rehabilitation that needed to happen for the building, some deferred maintenance and some other things, and then also some additions that were required to get it up to licensing standards. Even though this was a childcare facility in the past, those standards continue to evolve and continue to add kind of more restrictions, and recognizing that, that's really what we requested for that grant request there. So as we wait for that, to know if we get the grant funding, which will be probably in about September of this year, we're just making sure the property is adequately entitled. So we're also working through an operations plan to determine how best to move forward with managing and operating. So there's a couple of ways that that could happen. The city of Grand Junction opened up a childcare facility that they run in-house. They run it within their Parks Division, so we're considering possibly running this in-house. The other option would be what community hospital in Grand Junction did, which is actually open up a facility, own said facility, but have an operator run the operations and carry the liabilities of said facility. So two models that we're looking at and that we should be refining and kind of dialing in and confirming which choice over the coming months. So those are two big things, is waiting on the grant and then identifying our operations plan. So with that said, if we get the grant, we're looking at probably remodel efforts starting in early 2025 with construction completion, hopefully finishing up by mid-25, and then opening the doors sometime in mid-2025. So very exciting. Timelines seem to always maybe be a little more extended, but it seems actually fairly realistic here. So here are the conditional use permit criteria, and these are outlined in Section 1176 of the code. I'm not going to go into these in major detail. You've seen these in the past, and I won't read them verbatim. The staff report goes through them as well. But one thing I'll mention, or a couple of things I'll mention, are that the site did formerly function as a childcare facility and is currently operated in a similar capacity through the school district. It is compatible with the neighborhood. Adjacent park space is really phenomenal for the site, kind of adds to it, and does have ample parking. I did forward some correspondence on to you all that I received earlier today, and I just wanted to address a little bit of that. Some concerns were expressed about parking and traffic of this use. So specific to parking, 11 spaces would be required per the size of this facility, and right now, the site actually has 15 spaces. So the current parking exceeds the standards needed, so that's one benefit, one really great benefit of this site compared to other sites. And then related to traffic, there is a valid concern regarding Eight and a Half Road, and this is adjacent to the west and kind of the northwest of the site. Eight and a Half Road is really more treated like an alley. It does provide direct access to four residences, I believe, but to potentially mitigate some of the impact or any traffic that goes on that, there's definitely consideration being given to some sort of signage that basically says that it would be not a through road for, so the daycare users wouldn't be using that as their primary access point. So recognizing that's not really built out as a full road, we want to certainly think about how to approach that, and I think signage is probably the best route to go. I just wanted to lastly show a few pictures of the site here. So the image on the left is a very basic floor plan for now. We'll have some more dialed-in floor plans moving forward, but it shows, what it shows is really three kind of large, larger classrooms for kiddos, a kitchen, restrooms, and office spaces. So it really kind of fits the mold of a childcare facility fairly well here in its existing layout, and it's unlikely that this layout would change dramatically with the remodel. Definitely some interior improvements, but probably not significant changes to the floor plan. And then pictures on the other side of the screen there are just some exterior photos of the site. Can't really see it, but there's definitely some deferred maintenance that exists on the buildings, and new paint would be good, some kind of fixing of the roof there as well. And then lastly, again, some additional photos of the site, the exterior of the site, and then two photos of the interior, just the current interior finish. And again, that would be remodeled interior as well as exterior as proposed through that So in conclusion, based on all the information laid out in the staff report and kind of what I've explained tonight, we have, the city staff has concluded that the childcare facility use does meet the intent of that P-zone district, it meets the conditional use criteria in Section 1176 of the code, and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jase. I'm just excited because my kids went to Passage when it was Passage, and then it got shut down right after my youngest was there. And so getting it back into use to help members of the community is pretty exciting because it's already, it's already been built to be a childcare facility. It's fenced out, it's got playground equipment, it's got all that stuff outside, so that's great news. I had a question about the, and this doesn't, I don't think it really maybe in any way sways my, like, my decision here tonight or what I'm thinking about, but so the city, you did mention the two options, because that was my first question, is was the city going to run it or not? And obviously, you guys haven't really decided that yet, and that's, I think, fine. But is the child, regardless of whether the city runs it or if someone else is running it, kind of for the city, I guess, is it, is it going to be open to the public or is this just for city employees?
Great question. It would be, I think, how we've discussed it is I don't believe that the city employees would push this to capacity in terms of the size. So this facility, as we're looking at it, could probably accommodate between 40 and 60 kids. And I do not foresee that that would solely be city-related specifically. So what we did was we kicked out a survey to, I believe, nine other partner agencies, the REC district, Montrose County, some other quasi-governmental agencies to see what their demands were, and there's certainly demand that's shown in the community just through the city itself, but those partner organizations. So what will likely happen is certainly, city employees will likely have some sort of priority, but there will be spots open to other partner organizations and possibly the public as a whole. So we're dialing in that operational plan as we go, but I think that it will not solely be city employees that can use this.
And this is purely, I guess, anecdotal for everybody else up here, since, like I said, my kids used to go there when it was Passage. That parking lot hasn't changed, same parking lot as when it was Passage Charter. When it was Passage Charter, though, in addition to staff, you know, most of the space there was taken up by teen moms. So you've got their cars as well as staff's cars, and this, if it's a daycare, you're going to have staff vehicles, and then everyone else is twice a day, drop off and pick up, right? So, you know, the parking, I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue.
I, speaking from personal experience, because I have a young one in daycare, I would agree. I think typically what you see in daycare facilities, similar to schools, is you have that heavy traffic, pick-up and drop-off time, and then you have really staff parking in those, those middle hours between 8:00 and 4:00 p.m. or so. So, yeah, I would agree with that.
Guys got any questions?
Will the focus be just for Montrose residents, correct?
Hasn't been fully defined at this point in time. Likely, there's, there's demand solely in Montrose itself, so I would assume. Again, what we've looked at at this point is city staff and then partner agencies as to what that demand is. As we kind of dial in our operational plan more, we'll figure that out, as well as costs and other things associated.
And define partners, agencies, for me. So is it like Hilltop, Human and Health Services, or?
I think we are, we are open to discussing with other organizations, governmental organizations, quasi-governmental organizations, the hospital, the REC district, again, Montrose County, some of these other really larger employers that have expressed a need in childcare, but nothing specific has necessarily been done. So organizations like that, and I think we're open, no partnerships have been created at this point, though, so that's maybe one point to clarify, is that we've been in discussions with organizations as to maybe how they want to be involved, but we just don't quite know yet. It's a little too soon, and that's the purpose of this meeting, is to, again, entitle the property as we define some of these further specifics.
Okay, because if I'm just thinking about it out loud, right, if you involve the hospital, hospital and city alone is enough for the amount of children that you can serve, really?
Yeah, well, and it all depends. So, you know, the thought, and I know this is kind of getting off topic of the conditional use permit itself, but not all city staff, if city staff members have children in childcare facilities, that doesn't mean they're all going to switch their children from the existing care to new care. That's actually a common misconception, something Grand Junction, the city of Grand Junction ran into, is that they found out that a lot of their employees actually didn't switch care. It was mostly the employees that had immediate needs for care that went right into it. So there's some things, some lessons learned that I've learned from other organizations as they've worked through this as well, but no, I think you're right. If you just solely looked at kids from those bigger organizations, they could easily fill one facility, but will they solely fill one facility? I think the answer is kind of, it depends, and we'll find out and continue to survey and figure that out.
Well, thank you, because it is a huge need, for sure.
Jase, I have a quick question, having previously been on the school board when Passage moved out, and I know the city charges them like minimal rent to the school district. So let's say hypothetically that grant doesn't come through, is the city, is still, is the school going to still commit it to stay in that building? Are they in that building till 2025?
So as we've been in conversations with the school districts and determining an exit date, I believe their lease technically runs to 2026, and I believe it's actually no cost, I'm looking toward legal maybe for a head nod, but that said, what we've talked about with them is that they would stay in through either kind of the early spring of '25 or possibly mid-year '25 to the summertime. It'll kind of come down to that construction timeline and, to your point, the grant. If we don't receive that grant, it's still been expressed from city management and city council that there's interest in pursuing this as a childcare facility regardless of that, that grant. Would that maybe push things back a little? That is possible, so I think we'll, we'll figure that out more, we'll know a bit more here in probably about two months' time. But, yeah, very exciting, I think. This is, you know, housing, childcare, these are really difficult problems to solve over time, and to see a push from the city and city council to, to really show support on this is exciting, and then to find a facility is exciting.
The one word you haven't used is recruiting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, getting, getting people here and having a childcare facility, yeah.
Absolutely, no, that, that will help, I think, immensely. It's something that was a little bit of a concern even for me, moving over to Montrose when the city of Grand Junction had a childcare facility. So speaking just from a personal level, I, I would absolutely agree that it will help immensely in recruiting.
Jase, as, you know, it was Passage Charter School, and then that went away, and the school district's been using the building. The Charter School operated as an educational institution, but it had a component that was, if you, if you weren't a teen mom, you know, they had a handful of spots for the community to be used as a daycare. And maybe they got around it by saying that the kids were also, you know, the six-month-old was also learning and not just, you know, in daycare. But did the site not have a conditional use permit already? I mean, obviously, we're here talking about it, so I assume not, but what's there currently?
Yeah, no, well, this is kind of a gray area in the code, right? Because it's city-owned, so you could interpret this as a government facility, some could interpret this as a government facility, and maybe past, past people in my position did see that as a government facility instead of a childcare facility. We just wanted to make sure to eliminate any confusion that we went through the process appropriately. So if for the grants, if they come back and they say, is this property fully entitled from a land use perspective, and they perhaps look at our land use code and see that a conditional use permit is required for a childcare facility, we just wanted to make sure that we had ground to stand on. So no past CUP that we could find for the property, but we just wanted to make sure that, in the case that there's any confusion, that we went through the right avenue to get this approved, so.
Cool. All right, you guys got any questions before we open up to public comment? All right, we will open up the public comment portion for this agenda item. Ma'am, are you here to talk about this one?
No.
Okay, all right. Since you're the only one here, we'll close the public comment portion of this agenda item. I mean, if you guys have any other questions or discussion, like I said, the fact that it's got everything already, we're not sitting here having to discuss about fence heights and all that kind of stuff, and it's got parking already, and it's already ready to go, it's almost turnkey, it's pretty cool, that doesn't happen a lot, so I think it's great, but.
Well, you do bring up a question that I, you said the playground equipment, I didn't think about that, but how long has it been sitting outside? Is it still good? Will it be inspected? Does it need to be replaced?
I mean, actually looking at this, the image that's up there now, I don't know if there is any equipment out there anymore. I know they have like the outdoor, just the area that is fenced off, and back when it was being maintained, it was grass and they had stuff outside, so.
To meet licensing standards, yeah, there's not much out there now, there's some shade structures, but to meet licensing standards, a lot of, a lot of new will have to happen, and so part of that budget, I believe about $200,000, goes into the outdoor space. It is amazing how quickly you can rack up costs in outdoor space, I learned. And so that is, that is a big component. A lot of that will be replaced or refurbished, but there will be a lot more added to it, for sure, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Yep, cheers. Unless you guys have anything else, I will entertain a motion. Go ahead, Phoebe.
I hereby make a motion to approve the request to allow the conditional use of a childcare facility within the P public district located at 703 South Ninth. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing as outlined in the staff report.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, thanks, Delphine. All right, any discussion, guys, on the motion as presented? No? All right, all those in favor? All right? All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Agenda item two. This is the Public Works initial zoning.
Yes, and I'll be covering this one. Just need to pull up my presentation here.
While Will's doing that, just a reminder for everybody up here, because it is initial zoning, we do have to, we do have to give it something. So for any reason you don't agree with the staff's report, we still have to give it something today, so.
I will point out, as part of the code changes that we've been working through with Martin, I believe you've met Martin, but that kind of loophole in the code is, it's closed, yeah.
Closed.
You have to recommend approval or denial of the zoning that is applied for.
Thank you for making that easier.
Yeah. So this is the proposed annexation schedule. Tonight obviously serves as the zoning hearing, and we will be planning to bring this to city council for the official hearing on August 6th. This is a 23.3-acre site located in the city's urban growth boundary and the city's sewer and water service areas. The area is urbanizing, and this is an enclave, so 100% of the perimeter does border existing city limits. The surrounding area is Zoned P Public District, R3 Medium Density District, B3 General Commercial District, and I2 General Industrial District. The property is owned by the city, and so the plan for this is for the future public workshop. This would fall under government facilities, which is a use-by-right in every zoning district, so theoretically, any zoning district would work, but given that this is a city property, we generally zone most city-owned properties as P Public District, and so we are proposing that for this property as well. This is the annexation map showing the perimeter of the property. This is located just to the south of where East Oak Grove Road and South Rio Grande Avenue intersect, right where the turn is, and then this is also just to the east of the recreational path. According to the Future Land Use Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, the eastern portion of the property is shown as residential mixed density medium, which suggests a variety of residential types mixed within the neighborhood, and then the western portion is shown as river corridor, which may include a variety of uses related to outdoor recreation, housing, restaurants, and/or small retail centers. The property is within Growth Area 1, which represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow, and consists of enclaves mainly. And so in summary, the property does meet all annexation criteria. We have submitted an annexation impact report to the county. Since this is owned by the city, we do not need to have an annexation agreement. Staff finds that the P Public District meets all the annexation criteria and zoning criteria, and staff recommends approval of the P zoning district. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, William. My only question is, can we put the shop somewhere else? This is one of the last non-built-upon riverfront properties in town. Is the best use of it to be a shop?
I can speak to that.
Thanks, Scott. Can we not find somewhere north of town?
We've worked on this for about five years, so we evaluated, I think it's 12 or 14 different sites. There's a lot of parameters that went into it, and none of things shook out. We tried a lot of dead ends elsewhere. What didn't work out for a lot of them, it's, it's kind of a unicorn site, that you want something centrally located and available to your public and to operations, so, you know, we come and go a lot in a given day, so we need to be close to minor arterials, we need for response times to emergencies and things like that. We don't want to be way out in the, in the sticks. What's kind of unique about this site is it's kind of challenging to develop grade-wise and would have likely not developed otherwise. We felt it was actually a really good fit, so you have WAPA, Tri-State, and then the Bureau of Reclamation, Forest Service, all kind of in a campus area there. We felt it was a great opportunity to kind of create that transition between those industrial zones, that's pretty heavy industrial feel there, you're coming off of Stovers as well, because we, we intend to build to a higher architectural standard than what you would get in those. Because as you go, we agree, this is the river corridor, it's very important. As you go towards the south, that's going to transition into a lot higher-end riverfront development, and so those are kind of in play. The Unrined properties, as you get to the south, the old Western gravel properties there just north of the Ambulatory Care Center, those are all kind of geared to be higher-end commercial mixed-use residential kind of river-centered developments. We are setting it up, and we're getting pretty well along in the design to have a nice, kind of integrate it with all the amenities around there, so better trailhead parking, better trail access, this would be a catalyst for the extension of Rio Grande to open up the Implementation of park space down below, kind of stop, rest stop areas along the trail. And our building is kind of the center focal point with the good architectural front, and then everything else along the frontage is all landscaping, with the idea of kind of hiding, we hope that nobody knows it's a shop, in kind of those back areas that are kind of in a weird triangle and kind of more or less hidden, no matter how you go about it. So kind of for all those reasons, this is how we ended up here, and again, it was, I mean, it was a multi-year, multi-strikeout process, just, you know, it's, again, these, this type of land is really difficult to find. We, you know, we're pretty confident how we're going to be able to integrate it and make it a good fit down there. But, yeah, long answer, but does that answer the question?
Yeah, and I, I'm getting ahead of myself, it's not, you know, the, the design of what you guys are going to do there and everything else is not part of the zoning, but I knew you had the answer, so thank you for, thank you for giving us the insight. And, yeah, you're not, you're not wrong as far as the other, the other government entities that are there, and then the older industrial stuff. Everything the city's done recently has been built, built at a much higher spec with the way it looks being a key feature, so, thank you. Yeah, I think the big, my biggest thing was that, yeah, you got the part, you know, the, what do you call it, the bike path right there, and it's just, I, I've seen, and forgive me if it's the city, I think it's the city, Public Works. I've seen, and forgive me if it's a city, I think it's a city, Public Works, one of the current ones, over by where the gun store is, right? And I'm just thinking like chain link fence and trucks right along our awesome bike path, and I just don't want to see that.
We're very cognizant of that. We don't...
Yeah.
We're not proud of the current facility. This is what we want. We want to be nice. Obviously, there's a sweet spot there. You don't want to be too nice and waste taxpayer dollars. But I can very confidently say, it will be nothing at all like the existing facility.
Okay. You guys have any other questions for staff?
So Scott or staff, I'm just interested, because I really can't appreciate the map. So that little house and all, where the horses and all that, that has been bought by the city, or does that stay there as you're going down? I mean, explain...
No, so that's the same landowner, but everything essentially west of Rio Grande is remaining in the ownership of Mitchell, which is kind of everything in the green shown there, the hunter green, the aerial. So this is kind of that, if you kind of remember where like the Bureau of Reclamation sheds are and all, this is really the kind of land behind that. This used to have four or five trailers on it.
I was going to say, it was the trailer park that wasn't really supposed to be there, right?
Well, it had some challenges. The septic was failing. They'd considered coming into the city, but to do so would have been problematic. They were kind of trying to get out of the business in general. They'd been operating it since the 70s, and it kind of just dwindled over time. So it was kind of a win-win between the owners and the city to help clean that up. And so, yeah, everything essentially west of the trail, west of Rio Grande, has remained untouched and is still in private ownership.
It does look really nice already, by the way. I drive by there every day, and it's nice and clean now.
Kind of a funny piece. When this all came about, it dawned on us that, so there's two parcels shown there. This kind of southwestern one was a piece we acquired to do the connect initiative trail. So we had bought a portion of this property already. That's when we brought the sewer through there and brought the connect trail through. But we somehow fell through the cracks and we forgot to annex it. So now we're cleaning up that as well. So that one's actually kind of somewhat already developed. And that, again, that's all west of the trail is all rivers. So a lot of that, outside of where Rio Grande comes through, would remain undeveloped.
Thank you.
Scott, any other questions for staff? All right, let's open up the public comment portion for this agenda item. All right.
I'm not sure what your proper procedure is.
Why don't you come on up, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes, and make sure you talk to us up here, not the staff. It's really tempting to talk to them. Just talk to us, and we will refer anything back to them.
Okay, my name is Connie Pittenger. I live at 126 Columbia Way, which is adjacent to Rio Grande Avenue. I walk on this path regularly, and I have concerns. I guess I'm not understanding on your map right there exactly, I mean, because, I mean, where Rio Grande turns into Oak Grove is much more of a 90-degree turn, and I'm not seeing the 90-degree turn on your map right there. And so how the extension of Rio Grande is going to fit into the use of the city shop? And then, because I'm concerned, all right, since I walk there in the morning, I mean, I like my tranquility, and there are a lot of animals that live there. And I think environmentally, I mean, we're going to, are we destroying their homes completely? I look for birds. I mean, there are deer there, there are foxes there. So I mean, yeah, I guess I'm concerned that I'm going to lose my place where I go to enjoy nature. So if all of those trees are going to get removed, I mean, that's really going to take away the essence of the bike path. And I've been walking there for 30 years, so this is not a new place for me. So anyway, I just, I guess I need more of an understanding of how the extension of Rio Grande is going to fit in there and then the shop, and how far south, I mean, are you going, is this extending all the way to Ogden Road? I mean, because I know that there's a wider space once you get closer down to Ogden. So I'm, yeah, I'm not understanding your whole map and how this all fits together.
It is kind of hard to see on there, because it's kind of zoomed out.
Where?
There's a little green line.
And then it turns in, and that's your 90-degree angle on the green, on the top.
It's right, yeah. I don't know if you see that mouse is going up and down, but...
Oh, that's the 90-degree angle?
Yeah, it's hard to see on there, with all the colors, so.
Okay, so then, all right, so, okay, so then, and so where, where?
Oh, we lost it.
Scott's. Yeah, I mean, I can pull up, sorry, I can pull up a map here that shows that a little more clear.
So Connie, while he's pulling that up, did you have anything else as part of what you wanted to say?
Well, I guess I just wanted to know exactly how it's going to change. Yes.
Sounds good. You have a seat. We're waiting for Scott to pull that up, just so you know. And it is, this is, I think, one of the hardest things that we deal with as a planning commission is initial zoning. This particular one, I don't think, is one of the harder decisions, but I think it's really difficult to sit here and not ask all the questions about all the detail. Like, I want to see the plan and everything else before I tell you that will give you the zone that you're asking for. But the way the city code works and the process works, we can ask those questions all day. The developer or the applicant doesn't have to answer any of them at this stage. We're lucky that the applicant's the city in this case, and they actually do have more of a concrete plan than a lot of folks do. So we'll get some, I think, a little bit more clarity. Scott, can you keep the Rio Grande discussion, I think, just to how this either enables or whatever that process of that extension. We don't need to go further south than that, because it's not, like, that's not what we're talking about here. But just through that property, I assume with the city owning it, it cleans things up quite a bit as far as not having to deal with a private developer for right-of-way and everything else.
Certainly. Yeah, so those projects will run on their own. It's going to run on its own pathway. So independent of the zoning, independent of, you know, anything here, there's two projects. There's the Public Works shop, and then there's also the extension of Rio Grande, which they'll kind of go hand-in-hand. I think realistically, probably within the next five to seven years, we'll see them well underway, not completed, depending on funding. It's no small project between the two. It's about $50 million. As far as related to this site specifically, so the alignment of Rio Grande was established about eight years ago now, when we had to run the sewer through here to get rid of some lift stations. We want to make sure that it followed the roadway. It's been in our comp plan for a long time. So as, unfortunately, as growth and traffic growth continues, to avoid gridlock on towns, and we do need alternate routes. And so that's going to bring the extension of Rio Grande all the way from where it turns at Stovers here. So this is turned on its side. Stovers is kind of up here on the left side. We have a roundabout at East Oak Grove. Rio Grande will go down, roundabout at Ogden. Eventually, it'll go over. That won't happen in my lifetime. And then it'll head down here. You notice, the signal down here says Rio Grande out. That was all by design, or land was put in back in the early 2000s. Those projects will have their own open houses. They were kind of designed with trying to preserve as much of the river corridor as possible in mind. Obviously, when a big road comes through, there's some trees that will be lost. With Public Works shop, there's work to save. That's why we didn't take down any of the big ones now, you know, depending on sequencing and phasing and how we can lay things out to save as much as possible. That being said, there is a large portion of that site that would have clearing associated with it.
Just, because this is actually pretty interesting. So the whole site that's getting zoned tonight, I'd say half of it isn't getting developed as the Public Works site. So there's a huge chunk between that and the river and the bike path. So if you're on the bike path, there's a huge chunk of undisturbed, undeveloped land in this current map that you're showing us here.
Everything, yeah, essentially everything to the west kind of remains more or less untouched, or they may improve, you know, if there's amenities that can be put in park-wise.
Because there's a big gap between Rio Grande and the bike, where the bike path is there. So all that potentially should stay as untouched, trees and everything else.
Yep, yep. But the Public Works shop will have open houses. The road will have open houses. With public feedback, kind of helps steer those designs. And so, you know, it's not necessarily tying to the zoning at this point, but there is more to come on that. And we're very cognizant of those things. There's a needle we have to thread between, you know, giving our, fixing our transportation needs and operational needs and preserving what is great down there, because there's a lot of good stuff, or good ecological habitat to be preserved. So more to come, I think.
Well, thanks for showing us that. I mean, that alleviates my initial concern of, I mean, half the land that's against the river there isn't going to be developed by the city or anyone else, as it stands, so.
And we couldn't if we wanted.
Yeah, so there's a huge section there that's not even a concern.
With wetlands, floodplain, floodway, all those things, it's generally viewed as off-limits on the west side.
Okay, good to know. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, all right, seeing none. Bring it back up here. You guys got any other questions, discussion?
Does she understand what we're talking about?
So Connie, just because you're the only one here.
Right.
We, I'll, does that answer some of your questions?
Well, I guess, okay, so if you could, where does, so the second roundabout, I mean farther south, is that Ogden?
Yes, this is Ogden here. So Home Depot is kind of at the top of the screen here.
Right, okay. So then, we're, I mean, the open land, that the city is kind of using now, I mean, where they go dump their snow, and they have gravel and all of that. So that is not a part of your yellow area then?
The yellow is your walking path, means to know it, so that greenery will stay because of the...
I just asked about this one here. So this is the, off of Anderson Road, is probably the one you're talking about, where some of that stuff's getting dumped now.
Right, right.
Yep, so there's probably some overflow up here. A lot of this site's undeveloped as well because of the floodway of dry seagrass. So a lot of it kind of filled up into this area here. But yeah, so the trail remained untouched here. You have some overflow here from the site, but most of the work's been on the east side. All this west side will remain unchanged. We'll have rec trail connections down both sides of Rio Grande, that obviously connects to the existing trail and underpass that was by State Market that we put in a couple of years ago. All of that will remain untouched.
Okay, so the current path that goes off to southeast, I mean, goes like to City Market from the current trail, that's there. So I mean, how does that fit back into the...
That will just tie straight to Rio Grande and that will remain untouched.
Oh, so you're going to tie it back into Rio Grande and not back into the other current bike path?
Yeah, and these rec trails will come down through the roundabout will connect to the existing trail, which remained untouched with the bridge that goes down to Cobble Creek. Those now remain, will save the rest.
Okay, all right. So basically, so most of the shop then is kind of going up east and you're really going to be backing up adjacent more to the Forest Service and back up in there.
Exactly.
Away from things.
This is the Bureau of Reclamation facility here, so we're kind of backing this hole back here. All of this will remain untouched. This is an existing trail, an existing trail here. We're excited to approve this crossing. This is a pretty unsafe crossing right now.
Tell me that.
Yeah, and we're actually, but you know, roundabouts with the splitter island are much safer alternative routes. So we're excited to get that. In the long range, we also want to purchase, even just if it's just a river corridor, our long-range plans, connection down to New Fields and McNeil along the river here to finish the riverway trail. So that might happen eventually as well, which would just create more walking loops for the area. Walk the river would be a lot more pleasant than, you know, coming out along this side of Rio Grande.
Okay, so going back to the roundabout then, so then, are you going to make like a trailhead there, like you did at West Main? I mean, parking, because, I mean, a lot of people use that gravel area for parking now, I mean, and make it a trailhead?
Yeah, so the current plans are kind of integrated on both sides, so we don't have an unnecessary crossing here. So we keep this as trailhead here. Might need to improve it, and then with the parking, public parking for the Public Works shop, have that pebble strip head thrown, especially like on the weekends, you know, our guests don't need it, because we're not getting visitors on the weekend. So it makes a great spot to kick out and come on the trail without having to cross Oak Grove. The plan as it currently sits. And again, that's where those public houses, open houses and stuff can help steer. We can really fine tune that, make sure it hits on what the community wants and needs and then it is.
So Connie, I'm going to ask you to sit down so we can get the meeting moving. Also, I swear to secrecy, don't ever tell anyone I let you talk after your three minutes. You'll ruin every other meeting I ever run in here. If you have any other questions, though, obviously hit Scott up, and yeah, please stay, if you don't already get the city's...
I already know his number.
If you don't, if you don't get the emails from the city about events like that, like the open houses, you can sign up. There's a thing to do it online, to get emails or notifications or whatever. But they're all pretty helpful, because they have these big blown-up maps, and Scott and the rest of the staff are around to answer those kinds of questions. All right, bring it back up here, guys. Close public comment, and bring it back up here. You guys have any other questions, concerns about the initial zoning? No? Okay, cool. I'll entertain a motion then.
I got it. I hereby make a motion to recommend a city council approval, the initial zoning request of P public district. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, do I have a second? Richard, thank you. Any discussion necessary, guys? No? Everybody okay? All right, all those in favor? All right, all those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Third agenda, actually before the third agenda item, just thanks again, staff, for sharing the details there. Scott, like I said, I know it's not actually pertinent to just the initial zoning question, but if every developer had that, those zoning meetings would be a lot easier. So thank you.
All right, so this final item tonight, it's going to be a pretty similar presentation. It's the exact same timeline. This is a 1.14 acre site, which consists of a portion of that right-of-way, that South Rio Grande right-of-way. That's not technically in city limits right now. It's technically in the county. And so we do want to clean this up so we don't have just a portion of county right-of-way that is, you know, bordered on both sides by the city. The surrounding area is zoned P public district, R3 medium density district, I1 light industrial district, and areas outside of city limits. This is the annexation plat, and like I said, this is just a wedge of the right-of-way, right across from the rec trail and the other annexation. Since they didn't touch each other, we do have to treat these as two separate annexations, so this is why this is a separate presentation tonight. Obviously, they are very linked to each other. This area is shown as residential mixed density medium in the future land use map. Again, that suggests the area is appropriate for a variety of residential types. But obviously, given that this is right-of-way, there are no plans for residential development in this little piece here. This does also fall within growth area one as well. This is a portion of an enclave. This does not annex the entire enclave. And then mostly the same spiel as before. This time, we did not have to do an annexation impact report, since this one is under 10 acres. Of course, we do still alert the county anyway, so they are well aware that this is going on. But we did not have to do the formal annexation report like we did with the previous annexation. Staff does recommend approval of the P zoning district here as well. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
I assume the county's really happy that the city wants to take over the 30 feet of road.
I'm sure. I'm not even sure if they knew that was not in the city, but...
All right, you guys have any questions for staff? No? Okay. We'll open up public comment.
Can I have three more minutes?
Yes.
Sure. It's technically the rule, so yeah. You just need to state your name and address again, please.
All right, so Connie Pittenger, 126 Columbia Way. So I guess, is this like just south of Tri-State and next to the field of the farmer? I mean, and does it extend across to the bike path that's, I mean, right adjacent to Rio Grande? I mean, I'm not understanding exactly where the street is and, I mean, and where the bike path is exists, because I mean, right in, I mean, because obviously, the bike path is really close to Rio Grande right in there.
Is that your question, Connie? Is that your question, Connie?
Yes, yeah, I want to know exactly where, where is this one point?
You can have a seat.
One point for acres.
We'll explain it to you.
Thank you.
Have a seat, yep. All right. I'm going to close public comment. So it's really hard to see on here, because again, the little, that really light green line is the center of the road, and it kind of gets covered up with the highlighting that we're doing here. But basically, when the city goes around and does right of way, so the roadways around town as part of zoning, the road is normally either half of it, in some cases around town, or up to one side of it, is included in whatever that plot of land is. And this was a section that, over the course of time, never got included in any annexations. And so technically, it's a county section of the city road. It's just this orphaned little section of land. And so what this is, and we do these occasionally, where it's just going around the city and cleaning up these things, and basically getting them to line up with the adjacent property. And so in this case, it's right north of the turn of Rio Grande, right where Rio Grande loops around, is right there at the bottom of that little section.
Right.
Staff, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. This is a piece of the road and a little bit of the bike path as well, but essentially, for whatever reason, I don't know the background of all the annexations in this area, but for whatever reason, this little piece of the road was never annexed.
And this isn't that it's going to be developed, it's that we're just cleaning it up so that in a future map, you'll see this nice strip of land that's zone P all the way down to the end of that land. It's mostly an administrative thing that we're doing in this one, so... All right. You guys got any issues with the said cleanup? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
All right, Richard, thank you.
Here I make a motion to recommend City Council approval of the initial zoning Here I make a motion to recommend City Council approval of the initial zoning request of P Public District. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Phoebe. Any discussion necessary, guys? You all okay with that? All right. All those in favor? All right? All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Other business, staff? Do we have a next meeting?
Next meeting, to be seen.
TBD, all right. Anything else?
Maybe just a quick update on the code update process. So we are dialing in our kind of final dates, and everything looks to be settling out so that this code adoption will be updated prior to the year end. So more dates to come, specific to open houses and some other things, but we are kind of finalizing and writing that in, which is exciting, because code updates are a long, strenuous process. Every jurisdiction is kind of the same scenario, and this has actually been quicker than most other communities in my eyes, so exciting to start wrapping that up. But more information to come on public open houses, specific to the major code update that we've got going on, so...
Cool.
Will there be pizza?
Of course. Will there be pizza? You guys got anything else? No? Sounds good. All right, then, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Phoebe, second. Thanks, Richard. All those in favor? Aye. Adjourned.